2014 City Council Meeting. I would like to ask Councilman Phil Borium to please lead us in our invocation and pledge allegiance.
May your head. Mayor, look over us as the council, mayor, city staff make decisions for the city. Help us make the right ones. Help us use forethought. Be with those in our community who are sick or dealing with illnesses of the loved ones. And please help us remember that. Though we find our trials and tribulations important in large, they often pale in comparison compared to those from around the world. Be with those people who are suffering. Help them lose their day. Help them lose their equipment. May your name be great.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start our meeting tonight with recognition to be followed by a public presentation. I'd like to recognize the promotions of some individuals in our police department. And if you all wouldn't mind standing, these are big promotions for these individuals. As I read off your names, please. A promotion to Lieutenant Gray for Brad Bushelon. Lieutenant for Andrew Bearer. Lieutenant for Raven Hutchinson. And Division Chief for Bobby Duffer. Let's give these individuals a hand, please. Next, I'd like to ask representatives from Keith Bullock Beautiful to come up and give us a presentation on the upcoming Children's Water Festival. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for your time. Glad to be here. On our presentation, we had a few of the slideshow as pictures often tell the story better than words do. And unfortunately, we are unable to play it tonight unless someone has a disc reader. Anyone? We did. Okay. Bring it next time. We'll be back next time. So I am Kelly Collingburg, Director for Keith Bullock Beautiful. I also have here with me tonight community members Dr. Marie Wall, Elizabeth Lippincott, and President of the Keith Bullock Beautiful Order, Kimberly Bennett. And we are here tonight to discuss the role of water conservation efforts in Bullock County and here in City of Statesboro. As you all know, ensuring the efficient use of our local water supply is a key component to the overall management of the county's water resources. Efficient water use benefits natural resources by keeping as much water as possible within a natural environment and off of persistence. It also benefits water utilities and local government, such as yourself, in the sense that it requires less new resource development for expanding infrastructure. Pressure is all in Bullock County in the city of Statesboro's water resources, and it comes from many sources: population growth, industry inflows, local interest, industry flows. It has the potential for developing new sources of water within the regional rededications to the efficient use of water as necessary to meet future needs. And I know that we are all dedicated to furthering the city of Statesboro and Bullock County's economic and environmental needs. So part of Keith Bullock Beautiful's goal is to provide educational events to promote our mission, to enhance the beauty of Bullock County through education, public action, and example. We had an upcoming event on Friday, March 21st, and I would like to invite Keith Bullock Beautiful, Dr. Marie Wall, to share with you all.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting us come today. First of all, it's a pretty big, special event where we have that speech. She just got to Kelly to give me a minute after we were done. So like Kelly said, we have this event called the Children's Water Festival. It's on Friday, March 21st. That's this Friday from now until one. Have any of you all been to it? So we get approximately about 900 fourth graders at Georgia Southern. This is the seventh year we've done it. It always talks about Keith Bullock Beautiful and Georgia Southern. It is a great event. It teaches these fourth graders all about water conservation. It's super fun, which is exciting for the kids, but also it's very educational. We focus on water science, water conservation, and like I said, it targets fourth graders. Some of these, some of these fourth graders, this is the only field trip they did at Keith Beautiful. So it's a really special event for them. Kimberly Bennett made this awesome video showing pictures of all these 900 kids walking through this facility, rotating through these different activities. Some of these activities talk about the water cycle, water habitat, and how we can eliminate waste of population in our daily lives. So things that these kids can take home, understand, show their parents, show their siblings. It's an awesome event, and that fact is stuff they can use every day. Some of the activities are classing activities, and then we also have professional water entertainers. Yes, there are people that are called professional water entertainers, and they do these great comedic kind of juggling kind of activities for the kids that are going away. So there's indoor and outdoor activities. We give them snacks, and all this goes on in this one nine to 1:00 p.m. experience for them. And we have about 150 volunteers show up every year to help hold this off. It's really awesome. And then I encourage you to have, you know, 15, 20 minutes on Friday to stop by and see the water festival and see all these kids doing it. And all the work that's all in charge, footage that, as well as Kelly's hard work and Katie's being. I just, you know, it's a great event. I hate to ever that we wouldn't have that event, and we hope that we will. That being said, I brought, elicited a friend of mine who has had the experience of going as a parent. I'm going to introduce Elizabeth Lippincott. Not only is Elizabeth a business owner of three, but she is extremely involved in our community. She's a board member at the Garden of the Coastal Plains. She's a board member of the online Statesboro. She's a parent leadership team member at the First High Methodist Church, as well as a very active parent at Joya Morin. And she serves as the chairman of our experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. As I said, I am an involved parent of three children in our Bullock School, and I've come to you to just share my experience. I was lucky enough to be a chaperone last year at the water festival. I think this is kind of one of the best kept secrets of the field trip. You might not have children school age, but this has kind of become a rite of passage for the fourth graders in our county. And as Kelly indicated, this is one of the, this is the only field trip that many of the fourth graders in Bullock County get to participate in. I didn't know what to expect, but it was fabulous. It was incredibly engaging. They talked about these critical skills that we need to know. Everyone knows that water shortage is a huge problem for our state. And they presented it all in a very engaging and interactive way. The kids went away with all sorts of knowledge and fun, and I just couldn't believe it to the money for this experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have lots and lots of support. The Water Festival is by far my favorite event that we host at Keith Bullock Beautiful. When I took this position four years ago, running through all the activities and the events that we host each year, I got to the Water Festival and was like, "What? You want me to do what with how many fourth graders?" But it is by far my favorite event. The energy that the kids have, and the parents and the teachers, everyone's so excited. And I'm always blown away by the support that we have from the community at large. If we were to have to host this festival on our own with no support from in-kind donations and support from the community of the cause Bullock County and Keith Bullock Beautiful cost over $45,000 each year, we're able to do it for under $9,000. Last year I spent $7,600, and it makes such a difference. You see kids all over town with their Water Festival t-shirts on them. I was at one free cook the weekend, and it's all kids walking around. I think I freaked him out, but I was all excited about his Water Fest t-shirt. But it's such an incredible opportunity for the students and for our organization too. And I sent you all an invite to our guided tour on Friday at 11:00 a.m. to Russell Union. I hope you received them all. Please come out, come tour the festival, come see what it's about, come see the happiness. There's a sandwich in it for you and a t-shirt. But thank you again for the support and apologies about the beautiful slideshow. And I'll come back and I'll come talk with you all about bringing that completely up next month. We have that coming up soon. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And good luck. How many fourth graders?
888 is my line.
Okay. Okay. Next up our agenda, Ms. Sue, do we have anybody that's asked to make a public comment regarding an agenda item? Okay, thank you. We will move to consideration of a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Say it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll move to item six, which is a consideration of a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 2014-01. An ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 6 of the Statesboro Code of Ordinances Alcohol Breverages Drive-Thru Sales. This will be the second reading. It passed unanimously at the last council meeting. At first reading, would you like to speak to that at all, Allen?
I believe council has. It is what it says, drive-through sales or alcohol. I think.
I'd like, if Mayor, if you would not mind, I'd like to actually read an email that I received. I sent everyone a copy of it. Would you like to wait until comments after a vote or after a motion, or can I go and do that now? Okay. The email that I received was from a, was from a couple here in town. They have two kids. I'm just going to read it. As a matter of fact, I just got it yesterday. Says, "Dear Councilman Chance, please consider voting against drive-through alcohol sales. I am a parent of two children and do not think this is a good idea for our city. First, allowing drive-through sales is simply promoting alcohol sales. It is making it easier and more convenient to buy alcohol. Why would our community want to do this? Promoting alcohol has certainly helped some cities, but I do not see how promoting alcohol is a goal for the city of Statesboro. Second, it would make Statesboro look like the Wild West, a lawless place that cares more about making a buck than having a responsible, law-abiding community. There are literally thousands of parents that visit our town every year deciding whether or not to send their children to school here. They visit Georgia Southern and look at the surrounding apartments and community, and seeing a convenient drive-through beer, I don't know where she's going with this, steps away from the campus and campus residences would make me think twice about sending my child here to live in Statesboro. Third, with thousands of college students, it seems like we would want to deter, not encourage underage sales. I do not know this scientifically, but it seems that if you're checking the ID, it would be easier to spot a fake if the person was standing in front of you, not in their car. I just pulled out my driver's license, and here's information. You have picture, height, weight, gender, eye color, age. Certainly no way to verify height and weight for a person sitting in a car. And I doubt that you can tell eye color and such. What if the person with the ID is not driving, but a passenger? Finally, I question, where is this change coming from? I'm not hurting out crowd voters wanting this convenience. I fear that there are some businesses lobbying for this as a means to increase sales. The city council should not be supporting the city of Statesboro as a whole and not one's company or not one's company's business interest, as it is not in the best interest of Statesboro to promote alcohol sales. Thank you and the residents staying here and addressing. The only reason I read it is I talked with the resident. She was very adamant that she did not want this to happen, and I gave her my word that I didn't have time to send it to you guys, but I would read it before we leave. So I have kept my word, and I'll defer to you guys for your thoughts.
Well, we can do another discussion. Do I have a motion? A motion to approve the second reading ordinance 2014-01? There is no motion? Okay, we'll move to item seven. Item seven is public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve the following.
Point of order, ma'am. Where does that stand with first and second reading? Is this, are we considering this alone, or are we considering this moved on and everything's the same?
Not been moved in the second reading, so it's not been moved. By your position, ordinance, City of Statesboro, it's in order to be moved without being approved.
Just checking. Okay, that was the.
Mayor, for lack of a motion, can we, I guess, I was going to say, it's probably worth the discussion without a motion.
And see if it leads to a discussion.
I certainly, there's a couple of kids. I don't think anyone, I guess the reason why, after reading that, after hearing that, I don't think we've had it. So, yeah, we could certainly talk about it if you'd like to, Mayor. We could bring it up in other businesses now that we've already, I guess you can do it, kind of put the end if you want to bring it up to keep going with the flow. So we can go now.
No, if council wants to bring it up in other businesses, it's okay. Is that what you refer to that?
Question me.
Okay. Let's move to item seven, which is public hearing and consideration of a motion to approve the following. It is an application number RZ140201, which is a rezoning, and I'm going to ask Cindy Steinman with Planning and Development to come up and talk to us about application RZ140201, please.
Thank you. This piece of property is approximately 1.32 acres, and it's located to the south of the recently developed Village at Midtown owned by Henley Properties. This is a separate owner, separate applicant. They are asking to rezone the property from R20, single-family residential, to R4, high-density residential. Currently, there are four existing single-family homes. The applicant plans to keep three of those and construct six, making a total of nine three-bedroom, three-bath, single-family homes. The reason for the rezone is the single fam, I'm sorry, the Statesboro zoning ordinance requires that in a single-family district, you may only have one structure per lot. The R4 zoning district allows you to have multiple structures per lot, so that's potentially three in the rezone. This property is located in a primarily mixed-use area with commercial to the east, single-family to the south and west, and duplexes, the family properties to the north. It's located in the urban core character area as identified by the Statesboro Comprehensive Plan, which is identified as the activity and cultural hub of the region and supports a wide range of acceptable uses. It's also considered a major gateway into downtown. One of the implementation strategies of the urban core character area is to develop sites within the southern portions of the character area, especially along South Main, generally from Grady Street to Fair Road, in a manner that promotes the functional and aesthetic objectives of the character area while providing a physical linkage between Georgia Southern and downtown. Also, I want to read to you a part of the Statesboro Downtown Master Plan, which states that sites in the vicinity of college and Bullock Streets offers potential locations to develop a significant amount of urban housing, which just the title does. Section 2007 of the Statesboro zoning ordinance lists eight standards for you to consider when issuing a zoning map amendment, and one of those standards is the existing uses of zoning of nearby properties. Like I mentioned earlier, it is located in a mixed-use area surrounded by commercial, high-density residential, and single-family. SFC has recommended approval of this proposal. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to approve as well. I believe there are, the applicants are here for any questions, and I'd be happy to take any questions as well.
So we don't have any questions? Okay.
Well, I guess I do. We can ask, I guess we can ask for some of the speakers for it. I guess one of my concerns, we begin doing this in some areas, and we've done it kind of rapidly. Luckily, we've had some, I guess, attractive properties. I worry about us immediately going from R20 to R4 without seeing a plan, because R20 to R4 simply means, how many people can sleep in a property? It doesn't really have a lot of other, it just has to do with density. So I guess if someone wants to take their property, maximize the density, therefore maximizing their rent, I want something in return. I want a better-looking property. I want more green space. I want parking off the street, like maybe we talked about where we do some parking behind it. We've missed that on a few levels. We have a great, these properties need to be developed 500 yards from here, and it's not doing what we talked about, which was rear parking, built close to the road. I think it's going to look good, but that's not what we spent $200,000 at some point to develop a plan for. And so I guess my concern is simply changing R20 to R4, and it's not enough, not that I won't go for this, changing it. But I need to see what that's going to change to. And I guess the question from there is, goes to Allen. You know, Allen, legally, I'm concerned about making a zoning change without seeing something. A good example, I will say, is I thought Henley was building a three-story building that was going to be awesome looking on the corner right down the road. It's not happened. So we passed that. Every one of us thought that was what was going to be built. But then it went back to building what you could have built without passing the test. So I think we were all kind of, you know, like, wait a minute, what happened? So I guess I say that. I don't know, Allen, how you pass something, I'd say, well, I'm not changing the zoning until I see something. But at the same time, I don't want to require someone to have to do work, and then they say, no, I'm not changing it, because that's not the goal in my life. I don't know where my, where our role or obligation comes in.
So you're asking, Allen, what sort of conditions can you put on?
Or either I'm warning you that I'm going to make some decision.
I think I'll make a typewriter this one for you, because in your packet, it's completely like sort of the concept of the layout for this property, of those layout, as well as a rendering of what the outside.
Right, but they're not, that's changing from R20 to R40, R4. Are they bound to that?
Not unless the motion to approve is only tied to the concept that was submitted in those packets to.
I guess that's the, that's, that'll be the language that I mentioned, that's over time. I just see this happening more and more, Mayor, that people are going to come to us with a plot of land in the corridor, and they want to maximize it because they can put more people sitting.
Well, R4 is, as you said, is a technical distinction, that is a primary, also the local regulation that's of the other family districts, but it's doing the confines of those technicalities that sometimes require the help, but like, as I said, that was the problem here. And this is, in one perception, we have to get that, that R4 always means apartment. It doesn't always mean apartment. In some cases, over this case, it can be multiple structures on the people property. Those structures could be apartments, they could be, but it's what you're looking at density, and you're looking at the number of structures, groups that can be shared on a single parcel, kind of ownership. So in this particular, and that really, that's just the only zoning designation that we have in the ordinance that makes that clear. Even R3, the duplexes, you'll hear us come back, that we need a variance to allow multiple duplexes on the same parcel, so that those duplexes can enjoy a common ownership and be managed and seen by a human, which is going to make the hills of upheaval maintenance and all those sort of things. So this technically, right now, is the only district that we have to recommend to all these applicants, that they can do the sale of a commodity with multiple structures, a smaller, but a smaller type of development.
Why not a pub?
Why not a pub? A pub can create more difficulties than it answers. Our pub provision really applies property management, which is later in time, and it doesn't need any other regulations, and you're self-creating these regulations, which mean there at the staff level, and the applicant trying to find everything, and he's got back to the great space, and it really involves the whole process. And technically, I can plug this applicant's request into an R4, and it's very simple for us to analyze.
So which of those structures up there, Mandy, on the map are the existing structures? Go back to the number of units. Okay. If you don't mind, show me which ones are existing and which ones would be constructed. Part of this particular is a lot of gear.
If I'm not mistaken, C.D. Kirk, if I'm wrong, this is the, this is, that, not the rest, because it's been bought to that one, these two, and that one. And I'm calling C.D.'s former mayor, Mr. C.D. Kirk, this is on the chief's project.
And would they be uniform, are they proposing uniform in appearance, or by this, it doesn't look that big a catch?
Well, I think the applicant will be there, it's different. It's a particular question that's legal, but I understood that they wanted, they wanted to make almost a small neighborhood deal, was the thing that we understood, or I understood the rights out of this project and that this is what we should do.
The three existing buildings do not look the same. They don't look that different.
They don't look alike, but I do understand that they have plans for that.
And so what you're saying is this could be approved conditional upon using that same commodity that's up there now, that same site plan, is that correct?
Typically, we, yes, ma'am, typically, our separate course says, we offer a site plan if there's a regular, we offer that as well. But there's a disclaimer in there that says that this is the concept of, since only those particular site plans and regulations are not necessarily adopted by this law, which is at a non-specific point and intentionally happening. It is possible for the city council to approve design and continue that activity, but the consequence of that is if there are any changes, then I'm bound only to the site plan to not approve and without some flexibility, that's only the cost of cost of, of making more available. So be cautious, cautious.
Do I have any other questions from council?
I do have one. The first house, the Madeira House, it says that it has a two-car garage. So it's going to have a two-car garage plus parking spots out in front of the house?
The, for the overall plan, you said, the next, you can put it as a long bar that has more.
Okay, so nine will be the two-story with the two-car garage?
Not nine.
Okay.
A while ago, or I guess a past, we looked, we talked about parking, where you drive down a street in the urban corridor, houses are close to the street, parking's in the rear. Does that mean I'm crazy to take that? Isn't that what we said?
I think it's been.
Or am I missing?
I think it's been a goal, and we're trying to encourage it, but it's not very likely to happen.
So if it's a goal, and somebody's wanting us to make a variance, it can be one of the goals. So this does not address that at all.
It does not.
This puts all the work in my fundamental, asshole the middle of the area. So I guess if our plan is to, you know, to encourage the type of growth that you've laid out for us, that Allen's laid out for us, you know, we spent, you know, a lot of money to have some ideas, a lot of meetings we went through, a lot of, talking about what we want in downtown to look like. I'm not sure the number of units works, works fine, but I'm not sure this drawing looks like what we want until we get more of those. I guess I'm still, just trying to figure it out.
Maybe Allen can address this, or is it all that is similar to the property we were writing?
It was not, and that was.
And we blew that one, too.
Well.
We're about 0 for 3 on these one. I won't be 0 for 4. I mean, they're not going 0 for 4, but.
Well, they're not intended to be 0 for 4. I mean, this is, these are high-density properties in most parks, and they're walking into some dark properties. And one of our goals is, I think, to return from much of the state and have a high-density structure, and want to have a low people, up to density, and quit traffic. So this is complementary to the surrounding uses and the other side of the surrounding uses, which are, the downstate sounds a bit common, I think, so we can do the correction that we're trying to cut. So one said at the time, it meant that.
There's no, there's no sidewalk at all on the college.
No sidewalk.
And then there's no way to go. Is there any way to go out the back of this property, connect back to, I guess it's a little, that's a little storage warehouse. Not this council chose, but somebody, another council chose that there's an older downtown. I love the idea of the redevelopment. It's going great. For the same, and it fits our plan, and it's green, and it looks good, but I don't, that's not written yet, so. I guess what I'm saying is, is there, do we need to have more rules or regulations or ideas on these type of, these types? Because this is going to continue to come. We're going to get more and more R20s coming R4s. And I'll do it tomorrow if you can bring one or two in. Frank will probably bring some. We can all do that, and we need to do that, but I don't think. think we have a mechanism yet to make it exactly the way we want it. I think we've gotten very fortunate to have it the way, to have it look good. And the ones that Henley built on Gentilly, we got very fortunate it looked like that. He did not have to build them like that, but he did. I'm not happy with what's being built right down there, because that's not the plan. It doesn't match the rest of Mulberry, it does the right passing. So, Mayor, I'm, I'm not random, I don't have, I don't know what the desire is, but the desire's not to make the same mistake.
Well, I guess.
Wouldn't, would a better question be then, how do you put greater restrictions on the downtown development?
That's a, that's almost a bigger question than what we're addressing here for this particular rezon. That's the issue, I think I hear what Councilman Britt's saying. But to address it through this particular resoning, I don't know exactly how you do that, unless you say that you want to put particular restrictions on this, which don't necessarily involve the rezon itself, but involve the product that's being built by virtue of the fact that you did rezon it. So that happens to Alvin on that one.
Well, I mean, we are about to put in 27 bedrooms and arguably have no walk-in access to any.
Is there no access from behind that property, too? To south lane?
If you look at it, according to that map, if it hits that, the storage facilities, it hits, splits right by, I guess that's the.
But it will, it's going to be contiguous with his other properties, if that's correct. So he's not going to provide an access through the other.
They are, they are, these properties are singular in actual, they are owned by the right. Yes, they're the offlane, they're actually by the right, they just happen to be singular acres. I think the position, from my particular perspective, would be that as the planning department and development department, we took the concept and reviewed it through the ordinances and through the conference plan of the downtown space for master plan we have, and analyzed those, we did a write start with this particular applicant, and based on those materials, things fit, were they ideal, maybe not ideal, but there was enough positive moving in the direction, realizing the goal was to, the city's, to tell me the downtown master plan, which we learned, and actually, pretty well. If the council continues to have, if aren't, I'm just, I'm hearing, to see if that would pay. And I would talk to Alvin, I would ask him, just to sit there and explore what other changes you'd like to see us be making as a whole, in the particular district or neighborhood, so that as things are coming through our office, we can certainly, perhaps, especially in our thoughts.
So what you're saying is basically, this meets the guidelines that we currently have in place? And is consistent with what has been developed in that area up to date? Any more questions?
We're still in the other area, I guess I can explain a little bit, there may be further opposition, but you know.
Is there anyone here that wants to address it? Good evening.
Good afternoon, City Council, National Chance, I'd rather be free.
Take your time, take your time.
I think it's John Dotson of the firm, National Red, the record senior vice chairman. Answer one question, Mr. Rose, you brought up, it's not the top in the era, against the closing field, Laurelwood.
So all of them will be Laurelwood?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
What Mr. Rose plans, that he had some of these close ones, we bought the property at four existing buildings, they pointed out, one has already been demolished, they cannot do that. His plans are to renovate the three existing buildings. They're going to look exactly like the one that's been built, but anything on that side, to the feeling that we can get a way to improve. The plans to construct seven, six or either seven of these three-story Laurelwood plays, I'm going to tell you on the biggest question that we always have, Mr. Britt, you brought up, is parking. You can have the most wonderful site in the world, but if you don't have them, have them, no parking spaces, you're shooting yourself in the head. Could we, would you pick a good parking to put some in the back, or whatever? I'm sure we can investigate that. But one of the limits of this site, or the three existing buildings that they are trying to work around, we had a wall site, where we put the buildings down the middle, and parking on the back, or something, we could accommodate your desires. But this particular site has limitations on it, because it's the buildings of Laurelwood. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, the camp, Mr. Rose, and Laurelwood tonight. I do feel that anything, Mr. Rose, we do, I know, would be investigated, as far as the landscape and the neighborhood, if he would do on this site, leave his shopping, but that's what Mr. Rose, where is his business, his landscape? Do you have any questions that you may have, or Mr. Rose, if you'd like to speak to, or questions that you may have?
How close in appearance are you proposing to make the three existing buildings to the ones that you want to build?
As close as we can without, here, I saw it all, and redo. It's really hard to say, to be honest with you. One of the houses, Selina, Selina's a brick house, and it backs up, it's, the other ones are storied, storied, half those, a wood siding, or a fire siding. It's going to actually, as close as it can, but, well, totally beginning, yeah, so I can't promise they look exactly.
We intend to, we're going to hang them all the same color, and they'll, they'll all be brick, they all, the additional houses, all be brick, as I presented, some of them. And we intend to hang them all the exact same color, the same colors, and everything. We intend to, my brings, but we intend to fix it up real nice, I promise you. And we do a lot of landscaping, and, and, we do a lot of Mr. Ray's landscaping, and green ground, and places like that, so we intend to really make that show up, so, and it really needs, and I think that would really dress up that in the town. But no, and we intend to stay with what's on pitch, I promise you, we won't, we won't change it, if y'all approve.
Do you have any questions I can try and answer?
I spoke with both of y'all earlier, and I told y'all, there's one, one neighbor who owns three houses, I think maybe four houses, that are adjacent to this property. Bless her heart, she's been sick as a dog for the last four weeks. I asked her at 4:30 if she can come out and meet me and to look at this, to show her what I have, and she can't even leave the house. And she asked that I ask, y'all, that we can postpone it until first meeting in April. And y'all are in agreement with that, that was okay.
I know, I know well, I used to do work for us, I'd be glad to help.
Well, appreciate that, and waiting for two more weeks will be okay?
That'd be fine, that'd be fine, be glad to help.
So I'm just asking for a postpone, so.
Y'all on the table, the other one's at the table?
Thank you very much, appreciate y'all.
Appreciate it.
All right, that's zoning rezoned to consider is application number RZ 140202, involving Gentilly Gardens, I will ask Cindy to speak about that one as well, please.
Thank you. This property actually involves two separate pieces to itself, and, so I don't want to confuse you, so I'm going to get up for a second, and I'm going to show you on the map. Can you see it, is it right? So one, one part of it is, um, 0.31 acre strip of land, it's a 31-foot strip along Gentilly. By the way, this is Gentilly Gardens, this is Henley Development, the retreat at Gentilly to the north, and this is New Covenant Church's property. They want to purchase a small strip from the church to combine with Gentilly Gardens. In order to do that, they have to rezon from R15 to commercial retail to match Gentilly Gardens. On the north end here, we have a detention pond, or what's going to be used as a detention pond, that was originally part of Henley Properties, and has since been subdivided and combined with Gentilly Gardens. Since it was part of Henley Properties that was on R3, which is typical for your duplexes, and it has created a split zone property, which is, it has more than one designation. You may remember back in 2012, they were rezoned to commercial retail to rid them of the burden of a special exception that they were granted back in 1998. A special exception was to allow just them that use, own that piece of property, it was not allowed in a single-family residential district, which is what it was done. Since that time, they have, back in, it was last year, 2013, they rezoned the eastern side of the property, they got a strip from New Covenant Church, and it was to meet the setback requirement, but we rezoned that to match the commercial retail on the district. They're essentially doing the same thing with the small strip on the, the south end, they're purchasing it from New Covenant Church to meet setback requirement. The building will sit on that piece of property, which is why it's so important that we rezon it to match, so that we can use the correct setback requirement. The detention pond, a little bit of history on it, it was, Henley Properties was not required to have a detention pond, so it was an existing pond, which was essentially being flexed when it could be used on Gentilly Gardens, which is, is going to need it, so that's why they have combined. Let me know if I'm confusing you, I didn't even want you to sit through a little bit of confusion. The comprehensive plan is kind of a little bit irrelevant in this case, because it's already been used as an assisted living facility, but nevertheless, it is located in the developing character area, and it's adjacent to a green space area, which is primarily residential in nature, but under pressure to grow and to grow and manage. Like I mentioned before, section 2007 of the State's For Zoning Ordinance list eight standards to consider when granting a zoning map in the met, and one of those is the property values and the extent to which they could be diminished by the current zoning district. And since it is split zones, that may cause issues in the future if the property owner ever decides to sell, or could cause tax issues. Planning Commission did vote unanimously to approve with staff recommended conditions, and I'll list those out for you. The first one is the middle and approval of a combination plan. And the second one is that the area where the detention pond is located must remain a detention pond. It cannot be developed in a commercial manner, since it will be rezoned for actual retail. The representative for the applicant here to answer any questions, and I'll be happy to answer any as well.
Do we have any questions?
So there are no plans to put any new structures on either of these?
The, well, the strip to the south will, they'll expand, they're going to actually add on to Gentilly Gardens.
Just to accommodate the set, setbacks.
That's right, just to accommodate setbacks, and, but no, the detention pond is specifically put in that condition so that that does not happen.
Motion to approve with the recommendations by staff and the planning commission.
Say it.
All in favor, please, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Result passes, we go to item eight, which is a consideration of a motion to approve resolution 2014-05, which is a resolution to approve the supplemental contract for the Gasport, funding of fourth project between the City of Statesboro and Municipal Gas, Gas Authority of Georgia. Is Steve here to address this?
Thank you, my gas department. Alvin, is that to be part of this process, to have our attorney review contract, you did question, ask their counsel, and if he has, is this, is some really available?
This is a, this is a contract, intergovernmental agreement, including, we have intergovernmental grants from the City of Statesboro and Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia. In essence, we become a member of that Municipal Gas Authority, allows us to purchase gas and.
Probably the, the gas authority goes out and requires long-term gas contracts, they acquire it by several different methods, sometimes they use prepaid taxes, and we just want to buy gas for the future, sometimes they actually branch out and purchase some gas, use the properties, and as a member of the gas authority, we all, you know, we benefit from the savings that are gained by doing that, there also is some liability that each member carries and shares, and that's why we have, every time there's a new contract, this is going to fall, they've been doing this for 27 years, and the contract here is substantially the same as the 403, they did length, the 20 contract, 15 years, 20 years, probably the long-term contracts, and that's basically, we don't intend to, we link return for the last one.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2014-05?
So move.
Say it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next, a consideration of a motion to approve the fire department to seek a grant funding for the replacement of the Fire Safety Education House. Would anybody like to speak to that, please, from the fire department, or from public I guess Mr. Turner chooses to do so.
Which one is this, Mike?
Consideration of a motion to approve the fire, for the fire department, seek a grant?
No, I was prepared.
Number nine.
Decreasing four. This is a grant, this is assistance for fire by a grant, this is an AFG grant, I apologize, this is an AFG grant, we're, 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 we're city grant policy, permission to even apply, so, it was in your pockets, there's a really good background, I believe Chris Colson put that background together, that application together for the grant, that's what's going to be submitted, you've been up to the fair the last few years, you've seen the, the old fire training house, it's a smaller house, it's pretty much outdated, it doesn't have the technology that we need today, do it all the fire training, build for kids and adults, and, so, we're looking to, how to match grants, I'm pretty keen on a lot of it, if we were to get those ones to come out of our, our.
So you get the 3,200 bucks, in other words? You get the 3,200 bucks?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'm 64, Alvin. We're going to, we'll be competing for it, so we just ask for permission to apply in proportion of to receive, obviously, coming outside.
What's the AFG stand for?
Assistance for Fire by a Grant, AFG, this is an AFG, similar to the old, the long, the long range, that are now called the DAG grants, Justice Assistance.
Any more questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the fire department to seek a grant funding?
So move.
That's second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number 10, consideration of a motion to approve the retirement of Canine Bruno from active police services, and donation of Bruno to its handler, State Department Police Corporal Andrew Samples. I knew Bruno had to be somewhere.
Yeah, this, this is actually not Bruno, this is Rhea. This is our newest Canine, but Bruno is, if you remember Bruno, we bought him about, I guess, about five years ago, he is, he is the yellow lab that we had, and he is actually needs to be retired out early. Average life for a Canine, just an arctic stall, probably about six, seven years, six to eight years, he's got some displacement problems, and our, our Canine, they recommend to be retired. And as a force of normal business, what we, what we always recommend is that those dogs be offered to our handler first, and the handler of Bruno was, for example, Samples, and it is city property, so I'm coming before you, number one, to let you know, he does need to be retired out, and to seek permission to donate him to our handler. and to seek permission to donate him to our handler. Which is Officer Samples. And then what I would like to do too, is an introduction to the new Canine, which is Rio. And he is a two-year-old German Shepherd. And he is extremely good at what he does. He is a drug snip dog, and he is actually the.
Robert, are you suspect? Are you holding? Are you holding?
Let's let him loose and see where he goes.
The vendor that we got to come out of Florida, which is our normal vendor, actually used Rio as his demonstration dog. So he is, they didn't want to let him go, and we got attached to him. We were fortunate enough that he let us purchase him. We actually did purchase him to seek growth funds, so if he falls to city, it's very. Got any questions on the retirement of Bruno or the introduction of Rio?
I've got one question, because those dogs are, they're an invaluable part of what you guys do. Because of Bruno, because of Bruno giving such service to the city, can we do anything to help the hip dysplasia prior to giving that, prior to giving him to you?
Well, we found out about it about a month ago from LoR. He was getting some medication at times, really like a joint supplement.
Right.
It's really, his college stuff is creatine, he would post me on stuff, he'd go to the gym and day. But he's got about six months of the last week, he's got it pretty good.
But that's really all we can do?
Yeah, that's one thing we work with age and something that's not kind of.
Okay.
Wendell, let me ask real quick that. Did I recall that you spoke to the difference between those two dogs? This dog is a little bit different from Bruno, and in what way is that the case? Besides the fact they're different breeds?
That's the biggest thing. He is a, I guess what we call this, a pointed deer dog. Pointed deer dog is, appears to be more aggressive and has a, not aggressive in a bad way, but aggressive in their nature of working. And the Shepherds and the Velveteen Marters are typical working breeds, I'm sure you're familiar with it. Versus a Labrador Retriever, which is a lot like Bruno. And these big dogs typically have a stronger drive, tend to work to their master, and tend to do better, in a longer.
They tend to last, for lack of a better term, a little bit longer?
Tend to last longer. Tend to last longer, should we? I believe he was $7,500 that we actually took from our state seed.
And the health problems prompted me to ask, do our Canines have veterinary help claim?
This is not our operational, but we do have Dr. Gary, Dr. Gary Evans, who's a wonderful dog. He does really well for us, and also gives us to do veterinary care. It's actually, I would say probably overall, as far as veterinary care, I think we've led you about 300 years. Not a lot, really not a lot of upkeep, once you get them in their healthy. And you know, he comes certified, so there's a, we don't want to waste money on him. The vendor that we deal with out of Florida is very well-known, probably, for producing really good service dogs. So we hope to have a long life out of him, and he's a master of all farming, and we certainly, Bruno, glad that you guys approved it. But it's a bit long, for his health.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the retirement of Bruno and to give him to Officer Samples?
So, say it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Governor.
How are you?
He's probably about 15 pounds a little weight. Oh, no, he's a little bit, he's getting closer, he's about 65 pounds, probably, if he's ready. When he builds up a bit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to agenda item 11, other business from city council. Let's begin with item A, which is planning and developments going to update us. Update council regarding LND produce, LND produce at Highway 80, please.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. As you all may remember, in our second meeting in the month of February, we brought you an update to inform you that your expenditure that had been granted back in October of last year to LND Freedom State on Highway 80 had not met its obligations and timelines as previously agreed by the council and the outdoor guidance and that guard. The guidance, as I understood it, was that no action was taken by city council, which essentially meant that the business was in operation without the necessary approvals of any sort, either for this body administratively, since circuit of occupancy or occupation tax should have been issued. We did, as requested by councilman Chant, meet with the business owner, Friday, Mr. Gerald, and informed him of that, and also reviewed what needed to happen at the property in order for the property to qualify for the necessary circuit of occupancy and business license, and also what his options were, from me before. Had that discussion with him, and we reviewed his options. He came back on March 30th and submitted a letter to me that in essence expresses a movement towards complying, moving forward in the project, and however, does not make any, doesn't complete the project. There's no comments that are associated with that. We have to go into detail, maybe we want to read some of those letters, I believe. But whatever you all need to do, but what we need to do tonight is decide as best that we can how to handle this particular property and this business operation. Because at the moment, it is not compliant with our building codes, our safety codes, our ordinances regarding the legal life of the community. We need to guide this operation and how to.
And Alvin, can you speak to where the city's, what the situation is insofar as legally where we are?
I guess legally, at this point, we're withholding enforcement of our building regulations against this piece of property. Can get any others to come into compliance. So at some point, we'll have to enforce our building codes and our zoning ordinances through remedies that we have. Because right now, we're just not enforcing those for this piece of property.
Kind of timeline, has he given us this time?
Well, it's not a specific timeline, I can't tell you. In October, we produced a letter to Mr. Gerald on October the 17th that informed him of a six-month detention, excuse me, a 90-day detention that would be granted by this body on October the 15th, for him to come into compliance with city regulations. There were some milestone dates put in place, and by February 15th of this year, a circuit of occupancy and business license were required to be obtained. On November the 22nd, on, by November 1st, which was the first milestone date, Mr. Gerald had his facts, submitted a building permit application. Our team reviewed that, and on November the 22nd, we sent Mr. Gerald a letter detailing what needed to be done in order for a building permit to be issued. So he submitted a building permit application. The application did not replay all the necessary measures to be compliant with the building codes and the permit to actually issue. We outlined those for him in this letter, as we do with all of our building permit applications, sent that to him. Then we can write start a couple of other applications. No significant movement toward rectifying any of these outstanding issues has occurred to my knowledge. On March the 6th, when I met with Mr. Gerald in my office, he assured me that he had all intentions of coming into compliance and being able to, number one, actually meet the necessary requirements to get a building permit, which would allow him to make the necessary improvements and move forward. Once those improvements have been made, then he could seek to follow by the circuit of occupancy and business license. On March the 10th, he brought a letter to me, it's actually addressed to City Engineer, but the letter reads that this is to advise that as soon as the GDOT, George Department of Transportation, encroachment permit to widen and relocate the existing driveway pursuant to the enclosed tax draw and for two-way commercial traffic. It's approved, the new drive will be constructed. The letter is signed by the property owner, the representative of the property owner. Want to be very clear, Mr. Gerald does not even have a building permit that would qualify him to make the necessary improvements on the property that would allow him to then new board it again, for a circuit of occupancy and a business license. Reason he doesn't have a building permit is because he has not been able to demonstrate or plan or establish that he can meet the necessary requirements to move forward. One of those requirements is an encroachment permit by the George Department of Transportation. A letter that he has provided for me on March 10th indicates that he is seeking such permit from GDOT would turn that into us. But I don't have a permit from GDOT. I have a letter from the property owner telling me that they have secured some permit. At the moment, we still have quite a paper. We have a property that's not permitted in field, it's not likely to be occupied, it's not likely to be business. We have expired deadlines, we are, as Alvin said, withholding enforcement, but we have a business owner who is making some representation to me that he intends to continue to move forward and be compliant. Because he came through this body initially for these approvals.
However, this is, this was the first step towards getting a building permit, which he should have done 16 months ago now, 12 months ago?
This isn't all fair enough about the second step, but could have realistically been completed at least in late November or December last year. And I'm assuming in nature that I have a permit in hand, and I don't, I want to be clear.
That's assuming that he actually gets the permit from the state.
That's assuming he gets a permit from the state.
Because the DOT could say, no, we're not allowing you to widen the driveway.
Correct.
Mayor, Mr. Gerald's in the audience, would it be okay if we asked him if he wanted to come in?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gerald, would you like to make a brief comment on your progress?
Sure will.
Thank you, sir.
That's where best way to start. The biggest problem we have at the present time is the fact that we are waiting on the DMT. Originally, we thought that we could, you know, widen the system driveway later. Come them looking at it, it wouldn't work, for all the safety reasons. They suggested that we put a.
Put a who's down, Department of Transportation?
That's right. The guy, Mr. Gerald, suggested we put a driveway down on the way other end, up there there. You know, and that would be an in and out, and you would get by with it. And talking with Mr. Frank, we didn't, we want a showpiece out, we don't want something that looks like you were talking about earlier. But the state does not do very fast. So my next step was to see what we had to do. We kind of, you know, maybe get somebody to, you know, draw up a plan. So we got the engineer out there, and we realized, we come out, you know, for safety reasons, that we, I'm probably here, the driveway is half a meter right there across from coming out of Lowe's. And that's for safety reasons. So, you know, I'm thinking, whatever we have to do, we have to do, so we need to do it, draw it up. And so we got it drawn up, and now we're in, we are hoping, you know, the state doesn't always get there. We don't know that. So we are hoping to have this permit in the next, myself, for 14 days. And then just try not to overreact, or put the driveway in. And then I can finish up doing the things that, you know, it's not. I have put the handyman graphic to build it, or the chip down there, already got the place we're doing it to. The bathroom, but until we know where the parking is going, we're trying to this way or this way, we can't put the pans or eight cent wheels around, because we're just going to tear up. I have our gear, or that DOT, just certain locations, hopefully, in today. And that's, I'd rip one of those things, we had to do, try to make sure that it was, you know, sent to. They have to, you know, put on. And don't hold it to this, that thing, but, you know, that's why we were going to wait inches, you know, crushing. Maybe four inches or so, but we're just over, you know, my stuff. I have full intentions immediately, I have a couple of sets for the bathroom and the green lines. So I'm waiting with the permit from the state. I haven't been holding it for real days, but, you know, just doing all I can. My main season is coming, and I don't want to do anything, I don't get this season. It's the way. It's not easy for all the person like myself to make it. We're doing everything that is humanly possible to do to get the permit, you know. And I will call Mr. Gary again tomorrow, and even though I was sent to him, who's trying to help us on the fact that I'm not sure that he got it, because some people have a tendency to say one thing, do another, later on, you know, they, well, I never got them, so. If you have a gratitude, you're going to talk, you know, and do it, I'm ready to get over it. And I should come back and also, you know, every few days, I have the whole time, I have someone knows what's going on. You know, each step of the way, it's like that, trying to do something wrong, really, just doing best I can with that one state. People are kind of like from opposite arms, I'm very happy with that.
When did you contact them, Mr. Gerald? When did you contact DOT, when was your first contact with them?
Contacting the housekeeper. The first thing was, they looked after the laundry, and I was actually trying to stand up for them a lot. And that's when we started trying to do, you know, what we could do.
Did we have documentation of that, when Mr. Gerald spoke, or anything from DOT?
We have nothing.
So the only thing we have from DOT at this point is what you have?
I have nothing from DOT.
At all, we just have the?
The letter that I have, it says the property I am.
Did you want to come up, Mr. Franklin?
I can probably address the DOT.
Okay.
I know I can, but you may want to tell me anything after.
Well, I mean, I'm just, you know, I have to, you know, talk to such a patient, you know, all the time. I've just made up my mind, I've allowed, yes, I've said it, you don't tell me a fact. And I know that I'm doing things that are beyond saying, they have to be, but it is a point. I've tried to, all the years I've been with you, I've tried to try.
You know, because in the city like highway east, calling the same truck, that's the way we have to stay. Like the old damn tires, when you say a tire, then they always change, and they're fixed there. Do we have a record?
Yes, I'm not familiar with that.
It's right, that's, it's Eagle Town, Eagle Town is right there, it's almost as close to that on that thing, so.
I wonder if that'd be the point, is under the same, I'm trying to be asking him, you know.
It should.
And we hadn't been noticed that once.
Yes, to my knowledge, it should be, and I apologize if the particular one that you're referencing is not coming to my mind, but to my knowledge. referencing is not coming to my mind, but to my knowledge...
You want to give us cases? Is that where you set fish?
Yeah.
Where's that drive on?
I don't need you right now, right now, I'm bragging on this spot, saying what, it's nearly there, I mean, I'm concerned about that, they operate profit, what I won't do now.
Should I have a building permit?
Well, we can someone look into that, I wouldn't want to address that because I'm not familiar with specifics of that, when I can someone look into it. This particular case, what began this was that, as action, Mr. Gerald came to this body and asked for some special tuition. It wasn't a standard process, where he submitted an application that was administratively reviewed and went through what I would call a normal process of through the staff. So, when he came through that avenue, through UON, and UON granted him some special parameters, that has sort of required me to handle this one differently. I can't make judgment based on the standard rules and procedures, because this one's not a standard rule and procedure, process, this would count some process.
I understand, of course, I think I would do...
And that was when again?
Originally.
When the exemption was granted?
Well, the exemption was granted in October.
That originally came in front of the body when?
I would say, it was maybe last spring, May, Green Reserves.
Okay.
It's about a year ago now, in time for this.
A year in June.
A year in June.
Okay.
This would be where...
We can certainly, if business on, on roadside driveway, it certainly is owned appropriately and everything would be code, where they have permit, we can certainly, yes, pursue it to verify that they have a permit. Not simply do, but we'll verify that. What was, sort of, to sum up this, is an exception is still in business is operating at this point without a permit. If council chooses to extend this, I think there should be a definite plan of action, times, schedule, and if that plan of action and time schedule is not followed, we should basically close this business until they come in compliance. It's, as if council chooses to extend this project, they should be basically compelled to be compliant to whatever schedule or what plan of action the council chooses to do.
Alan, what's the downside in giving him a third strike essentially?
Before I answer that, public meeting.
I don't, I don't know that you did.
Okay.
I can, I can address the DOT issue, I can address his accusations, I don't know what you're requiring him to do, I'm assuming he'll do whatever you require him to do. But, just to give you a little history, that site's been operated as, as a Christmas tree, might be about ten fifty, there is an existing cut, which has been used to operate that business. But it brought my attention that the DOT wanted to, in other words, that cut didn't meet their standards, and I don't know when it was brought to me, but it was recent. Anyway, I hired a Maxwell engineer to build up a plan, it was sent to Jessup, the DOT. I got an email yesterday that approved it. I talked to him today to see what he needed to do to finalize it, and they want some more engineering done from Maxwell Engineering, so I got Maxwell Engineering on the phone. They will submit, it will take them about two days. After they get that, these things have to go to Atlanta, and that probably takes fourteen days before that permit is approved for that, that, enlarging that cut and relocating that is approved. I don't anticipate any problems, but this is a government agency, and I don't think any sane person would mark what a government agency would do.
Come on now.
That's for...
Lena, they require a V cell lane?
No.
And Robert is in our plans to re-apply a V cell lane.
And I, I think I get it approved with, with, based on what they told me.
So, what I'm hearing is that there's the process of getting a DOT permit itself to have the work done?
Right, in other words, that's a state highway.
Right.
Federal highway, whatever, they got jurisdiction of it, they're the only ones that, the best I know, they're the ones that have to approve it.
And you're going to bear the responsibility and the cost of doing that?
They'll prove it, as it is right now, we'll prove it here.
As it is right now, if they come back with different, something back that's different than we don't know that...
They spend a hundred thousand dollars on a rubber beach.
Right. So, it's contingent on then coming back and approving it as is, and then once that's done...
But they have finished to be approved.
Okay. And then, once that's done, Mr. Gerald is responsible for doing several things to his operation.
Whatever, we'll get the cut for them, we're going to relocate the cut across from Lowe's parking lot, cut.
Okay.
Then we'll come back for a stop.
That one's funny.
But that's where the engineer's saying needs to get, so look at it.
And once the cut, then why are we waiting on the cut, then you can put in your driveways that you want?
When we get the cut, and I can finish the other things that is required, and in fact, I thought I had paid for a building, and I filled out some stuff up there with Mr. Chipton now, and I paid some money, and I thought that was for a building permit. If I need to get a building permit, it's, I didn't know it. And, you know, it's as simple as somebody telling me what I need to do, and I'll do it. I want to be in compliance as quick as I can with everything. I mean, look here, I don't have time for all this stuff, you know, that needs to be done and run my business, I need to get it done, get it out of the way. But the state of what's really holding us up.
So, the decision of this body is going to be, do we allow, or does the body allow Mr. Gerald to continue to operate pending all these things being done? Or does this body say, we're not going to grant a continued, a continuation at this point? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding, Alan?
I have one more question, and I still haven't gotten a chance to ask. Mr. Franklin, can you give us a copy of that email that tentatively approves this? You can produce that, or...
Yeah.
If, if, this is purely my opinion, if Mr. Gerald can show continuous effort and achieving even the most minute details, showing a pattern of getting it done, I would not send him away of operating it this. But I would like, I would like an email, and this is to show good faith.
After he said that, no.
Yeah, once you get, once you get the empty wall, this is not returning.
Right.
Mandy, impressed me how long should it take to satisfy what you need after he's the cut in? If you could just get it to Mandy, she'll, she'll espouse it to all of us.
I will, I will take care of that. That is really coming to find, because of how quickly Mr. Gerald and his team made. We met with Mr. Gerald on October the 8th for rights are, we put in writing on November the 22nd what needs to be done in order to get a building permit, he didn't comply, skipped the bomb, except one. We did that, again, distributed this to Mr. Gerald in office last week on March the 6th, a month and a half ago. There's communications in file where he has met with various other members of the team to ask questions, and they have responded. Mr. Gerald is confused about what needs to be done, I apologize, I've got my team to help if we can. How quickly he will move to council, that is coming to find you.
Well, Mr. Gerald, if you would not, I know this is going to be difficult, but if you would not mind, we would, we would like continuous updates on where, where you are in this process.
I have no problem.
If you can do that, I would, I would say, I would say we shouldn't stand in your way. The only thing I will say is this, Mandy, you have, you have given what you just showed us to Mr. Gerald.
Yes, and please...
Mr. Gerald, do you remember getting that from Ms. Cody?
Yes, sir, I remember getting that, but now, building permit, I did not, I thought I had.
Right.
She will show me what I need to fill out, and the building permit, or if I need to pay a temporary license fee, you know, none of that's not a problem, I'm not trying to get out of doing anything that I shouldn't do.
My understanding is you can't get the building permit without the cut permit from the DOT. Is that correct?
And it doesn't.
In addition to whatever else was in that letter.
That's correct.
Let me ask one question.
Sure.
Again, this process at this point has been about nine months early with not fulfilling, you know, much for progress, with council entertaining setting some sort of reasonable retirement upon this project. So, if it doesn't happen, then we've got some recourse, because it could take another year, two years, three years, four years.
How much time do you need after you get this permit from the DOT?
Well, I heard you say fourteen days, and then you expect them to have something from the DOT.
Hope, hope he does. I think we can do this project in ninety days.
Sold, Mr. Franklin. You had ninety days.
I was going to even give him a hundred twenty.
And, you know, if you file suit, you still have time.
So, we'll give you a hundred eighty, you can do it after that.
No, no, we're not going up.
Mr. Gerald, were you okay with that?
We're going to get that cut in.
Well, understand that you're operating out there without city formal approval leaves the city some exposure, it does. And so, it's all well and good to say we're ninety days out, or we're a hundred and eighty days out, but as we sit up here know, particularly, when you're talking about your busy season, you're expecting your traffic to increase, that, you know, the city is exposed by having you out there unlicensed, so to speak. So, you know, I don't want to make light of that. And, you know, in keeping with what Mr. Parker said, you know, I think from the city's perspective, and I think from our attorney's perspective, putting a, you know, a pretty, a definite timeline on this is very important. I don't know what y'all think about it, or what you're comfortable with, you said ninety days?
Mr. Franklin and Mr. Gerald are okay with ninety days, that will put us almost at one year. If, I feel really strongly that if they're making this progress now, Mr. Gerald, please, at the end of ninety days, that's it.
Yes, can we ask?
How about ninety days from the approval of the DOT permit?
I'm okay with that.
Can we ask for the building permit within thirty days?
I would like the email immediately, just to give us peace of mind, and then...
I'll give you the, I'll give you that email.
If you can do that, so we can document the file that we are trying to move forward. For right now, that, I think that would be sufficient at this point.
Well, if you say, if you say ninety days, and then if for some reason, that permit comes back after a long...
Ninety days, he said he needed ninety days once they get the permit, because he won't be able to start any work until the permit comes in, so...
Yeah.
I'm, I'm okay with giving him ninety days from the granting of the permit, or if you don't get the permit, then we're just, that'll be it, yeah, it's done.
So, may I ask you something like that, to make sure?
Go right ahead.
Email from GDOT immediately in our file, and I'll send an email to you also, let you know that I received that. Be ninety days from today, the business is completely live, it complies with city regulations.
Ninety days from the receipt.
Or, if, or, if within ninety days from today, I don't have no received a GDOT permit, okay.
That doesn't give you the, what council board wants to do?
I, I think, that's not right.
Phil, if it's already tentatively approved, as Mr. Franklin's saying, ninety days from today, we're just muddy in the water. So, let's just do ninety days.
Give him a hundred twenty then, just to... I asked him how long he's going to need from the time of the permit, he said he needs ninety days building.
That, that is...
Okay, my hundred twenty.
I think we're arguing a bit.
Give him a hundred twenty.
Hundred twenty days, I make a motion.
That, that hundred twenty days is included in the permitting process with the department?
Yeah, all that is going inside of today.
That's the clarification I wanted.
Are they going to give you enough time?
Yeah, we should do it. I mean, I, if we ran it, just, I agree with you.
I don't know. I guess, I'm going to go back four times. I say, keep coming back, keep getting that in. We just leave it on, we just leave it in every, in every meeting, and it's done.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I guess the, the motion is to give him another hundred twenty days.
Do I have a motion to give a hundred and twenty days by which to allow the permit from the Department of Transportation and fulfillment, and building fulfillment as described by our Planning and Development Division?
Do we need to include anything about the email?
I think we're good. I'm, I'm leaving it to Mr. Franklin's word.
We got it.
Okay.
So, move.
Any discussion? All, all in favor? Ma'am? Okay.
A hundred and twenty days from today.
Just a hundred and twenty days from today.
To complete the project as described.
Everything has to be, has to be in the hundred and twenty days.
So that, correct, the correct license can be issued, to be able to do, to do business as a licensed business. Okay?
Okay.
We'll be back to a hundred and twenty two days. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Eleven B is an announcement regarding retail strategies presentation on March 20th, and I'm assuming that Ms. Cody would like to be back.
Hi, Ms. Mayor. The council, as you all may remember, were kind enough to allow us to contact with retail strategies back in September of last year, and do some, do some need to hit research and see if they're identifying not only who we are as a commercial entity, but it's an opportunity that we as a city and our folks in the city can receive. They are coming, Councilman Britt, thanks for there to your service today, y'all can hear what they have to say, it starts at nine o'clock this time.
Done.
Done.
Done, all right, everything, who, do I have any other business from council?
I don't, I think...
Maybe we need to bring back up item number...
We don't have to. Six.
And also, each other, Roger.
So, in what order would we like to do this?
You want paper, scissors?
Okay.
Six, come and click.
All right, let's bring up item six again. Who would like to bring that up, with Councilman Wood?
Sure, we'll bring it up.
Okay.
We have a second reading for an ordinance. I guess one of my first things is, once again, y'all, we have ordinance in front of us that no one seems to be asking for, and yet we have opposition to it. Seems like it's something that we could do, it seems like it's not a great idea. I've actually spoken to the public safety, to the public safety guys, they do not see a difference in having the drive-through as opposed to not having the drive-through. So, the way it looks to me, it seems like the whole council's kind of like, really, whatever, you know, it's one thing when somebody comes up here and wants to do a, wants to sell Christmas trees and petition with us every time, like I was trying to build two multi-million dollar buildings, and he showed up and asked us for it. I don't quite understand that business lawsuit. But, with that being said, the letter from the young lady definitely has some merits. In twenty-seven states, it's not legal to buy drive-up alcohol. Twenty-three states it is, twenty-seven states it's not. So, apparently, certain governments have considered this not a good idea, to have drive-up alcohol. One of the ideas that I've certainly thought about, well, a couple of you guys, there will be a compromise on that, which is, and I have read it by Public Safety Derek K. Way, is, it says you can't sell any alcohol after six at six P.M. in these drive-throughs. We also have a complaint from some of the current owners of C stores that are like, look, man, we picked out a building, and we didn't design it that way because that wasn't legal, so we borrowed it. I don't know how any new convenience stores we've built lately, so this may be one of the few that we've actually built lately that would actually incorporate that, so. That being said, that's kind of all the information, and I'll go either way, we just not talk about it, just rock it all, it's, it's like it does.
Well, I'd like to speak, at least from my district, I've heard the same thing, pretty much on the same lines as what Captain Chan said. Against it for the same reason, and I haven't heard anything for it, no one's... Um, against it for the same reason, and I haven't heard anything for it, no one's, uh, no one's said anything good about this idea. So, for our district, for opposed, I, once again, I didn't, I didn't read it to persuade the council. I was asked... Not, not at all, I, I wanted to bring up the same, uh, I wanted to say where I was, why I was changing them up over the last hour. And, and it falls on the same thing to you there.
Right.
One question, let me, let me, you may, uh, we had sales through driving windows, uh, legal in the state for until what time? How long since then?
Last one I remember was the cork and bottle.
That's what, late nineties?
Since, uh, since I've been on campus. Or, or, since we've been on campus. Cork and bottle. So it's within eleven years.
And I know the station on Highway eighty west, which announced Parkers, but it used to be Parkers, that's driving when they sold them. So I don't know how long it's been, but it hasn't been six, eight years from most, I'm thinking.
Was there a reason for it not?
Yeah, was there a reason?
They were, they wanted to ban alcohol.
That was a good story.
We had a witch hunt with a, with an alcohol control board for a while, so anything you could do. Um, and there wasn't, according to the window, according to Scott Brunson, there was nothing directly to say the cork and bottle influenced the way. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that's what y'all said earlier, there wasn't anything to say that there wasn't a problem.
In fact, one of those individuals who used to work in a storage company did that, he used to sell, he said, obviously, I have no problem with having a bar sale. I'll tell you which of those states, but one of those states.
Well, I, I did have to say, I think it's interesting that, you know, I don't, I don't see that, that this particular item has generated much discussion at all in the way, I mean, nobody's bothered to come in front of here.
Well, nobody's even come to show up and ask for it, so why change it if nobody's even asking for it to be changed? If nobody's showing up to ask for it, why change it?
Well, it's not for a specific location, it's just for, you know, all convenience stores in the future, you know, like that, as a reason. So that not as a personal, it's just an emphasis.
I thought Mandy said it was specific.
No.
Mandy, I know, pardon.
Mandy's talking like Mike Tyson there.
Good job, good job, good job.
And not this, this, this was a change to the ordinance, not a, a ban, so a, a specific, any particular location.
There you go.
So it's not specific to any particular location?
It's, it's, it's removing some wording that was put in the ordinance, so, six, eight years ago, and I choose, it's taking them wording, wording back out, because all this is done face to face. I think then you added a little additional thing here, took the base, it says, removing those words that were put in it for him to sell on the drive-throughs. Removing those from the ordinance.
Well, that begs the question, how did it get on the agenda to begin with?
I've been on this, I've been on the agenda.
Okay, and the thought of doing that was just to remove some language that was in the ordinance?
And the, and the ordinance, that's right.
Okay. Clear. I can ask for, well, I can ask for a motion, again.
I mean, it's inappropriate only if you want drive-through beer, oh, it's perfectly fine.
Are you asking for a motion?
I'm asking for a motion, again, because you brought it back up again. Do you want a, do I have a motion to approve resolution, ordinance two zero one four dash oh one? Uh, excuse me, do I have a motion to vote on approval of ordinance two zero one four dash oh one? There is no motion, therefore there is no votes. Do we have, uh, I think there were two other items of other business from the council?
Yeah, just see.
Sir. Uh, Jackie Grant, in case I'm ever, uh, so to let all the guys know about the, literally having this state of unemployment panel discussion at North Southern University next week, you know, it's kind of a privilege. We have President of State for Area Society of Resource Management. We're actually partnering with North Southern, uh, City State Bar is actually partnering with, uh, Danish, and we're researching with Department of Labor, uh, providing data, stats, every one of these resources, we're trying to, as well as, you guys, professionals, sharing, ask questions about employment, training, and, 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 and also addressing all the full trainings, you know, having, you know, five A, for, for education. Next week, March twenty-fifth, uh, North Southern University, we, we Smith Lane, uh, we'll link that, and people. Free and travel, and, 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 she's a name, some, it's a name, some of the, we, we try to...
Ms. Sue, did you have something?
Yes, I know, I'm very happy, but I still don't think, Johnson, we passed out, struggling here, all of us, and, and, and...
And that had to do specifically with which one last time? I think it was Food World.
Yeah, the old part, that crossed it out. Yeah, Food World.
The, the reason in that, um, based on, um, that column, section six, section six, because our, we do a physical, you know, of, of, July first, or June third, anybody applying, and this is the first, uh, applying application, that means, for them, for that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll point it out, so very in the, in the final meeting, but I, I just totally forgot what you done, or something added. Thank you, Ms. Sue.
Okay, any other business? Any public comments that have been registered, Ms. Sue? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, any adjourn?